The Exec Council had our planning retreat, the very first part of July. And so this is just kind of a compilation of some of the initial work that we did that I want to put in front of you. And let you know what we talked about just a little bit and get some input from you folks. I, I put, obviously, I love this picture with Matt Galberth and our student. That's one of my favorite welding pictures with all the sparks going. And so you probably have seen it before from me, but included the mission and the vision are timeless institutional values. That really drives the work that we do every single day. And it really sets the tone for our expectations for working with our students and helping them be successful. And, you know, working with our communities in order to be good partners. And so, you know, I just put those on there again as a reminder. And that's how we started out our, our planning retreat too, also in talking about those and reviewing those. Because that's really why we're here and why we go to work and, and hopefully, you know, why you folks are engaged as board members as well. Because you believe in the, the work that the college does. The strategic plan really is, is a blueprint to transform and empower diverse learners for career success, lifelong learning and community engagement. We wanted to provide initiatives for creating high quality learning environments for our students. Through innovation and collaboration, financial and strategic investments. And, you know, that will address all phases of our operation. It really allows us to address the changes or should allow us to address the changes that we're seeing in higher, in the higher ed landscape that we're going to continue to see. It helps us design goals and priorities and performance indicators that will leverage the work that we do. So that we can create greater levels of student success and address our community and workforce needs. Because we know that that's a significant conversation and issue across the state and actually across the nation. Really gives us an opportunity to ensure that our college culture and our environment where all of our faculty, staff and students belong. That they can belong, engage and thrive. And then helps direct our vision and work and resources toward a defined vision for this college's future. So that's just kind of some overarching, you know, introduction to some of the things that we talked about during the, the, if you remember right. Our prior strategic plan had four overarching goals. And what I want to talk with you folks about is the overarching goals and at least the priority areas that we kind of have identified. We'll put together the action plans and the, and the metrics and those kinds of things. And, and, you know, we don't need to get down into that level of detail tonight. But I do certainly want to, to put in front of you the goals that we have identified. And then at least the initial, some of the initial performance or priority areas. So in the past, we've had ensure student success, invest in our employees' success, contribute to our communities and advance institutional effectiveness. And those are still critical and driving goals. We just have changed some of the wording, updated the wording just a little bit and then added a couple of goals. So we still want to support, it's important for us to support students and their success. We want to advance communities and partnerships. We want to enhance employee success and excellence. We want to drive institutional sustainability and growth. We want to champion excellence in innovation. And we want to inspire values of equity and access. Those are the six goals that the Exec Council created as just overarching areas. They're broad goals, they mean a lot of different things. We can put a lot of different priorities and performance indicators underneath each of those. But we also know that from a strategic planning perspective, it's got to be, we don't want a strategic plan that's got 80 priorities on it. You know, it's got to be a manageable, workable strategic plan with action items that we can address. Not necessarily all that can be accomplished in a year's period of time. But we want, you know, we want to be able to blend our strategic plan in with what the Kansas Board of Regents is developing. As far as their updated strategic plan, it needs to address Higher Learning Commission expectations and accreditation expectations from other entities. And it, and it needs to be part of what we do, of course, moving forward from a budget perspective as well. So those six goals are what we talked about in our planning retreat. We did a SWOT analysis as part of our planning retreat to look at our strengths and our weaknesses and our opportunities and our threats. That helped us then start to talk about some of the priority areas. So if you flip, flip to the third page, Heather has up on the screen, again, the six overarching goals. Now we're going to look a little bit at the priorities. And again, these aren't fleshed out, they aren't finalized. This is just, this is kind of where we landed the day that, that we did our planning retreat. So under supporting students and their success, and again, these priorities are broad enough that the action plans underneath or the key performance indicators. Can cover a, a pretty large multitude or a broad sec, cross section of things. We want to maximize equitable access for students. And so that means, that can mean a lot of different things. It can mean things that we want to make sure our tuition and fees are affordable. Make sure that our students have access to the technology needs that they have. Make sure that they have access to tutoring and, you know, and things like that. So this can mean a lot of different things. We do want to improve student outcomes, including retention, persistence and completion of student goals. That is a, is a board of Regents initiative moving forward. They're always looking at this type of goal as one of their strategic measures system wide. We know even through COVID last spring, our retention rate was higher, our withdrawal rate was lower. And we've increased our completion and graduation rates. It's hard to do those, they don't go, they don't jump by huge numbers. But any increase means that students are, are being more successful. So we want to continue to focus on that. And we know that that will be a piece of the Board of Regents Strategic Plan. And we also know that it's something that the Higher Learning Commission looks at as well. And we want to increase overall enrollment. Under advancing communities and partnerships. And again, pretty broad, broad priorities, but action plans will be more specific when we line those out. Provide a return on investment for student and taxpayer resources committed to the college. This can mean things like, well, we've got strengthening partnerships with business and industry advisory committees and stakeholders. To support economic and workforce development. So within these two, you know, creating an opportunity for increased partnerships with business and industry. And not just those partnerships on paper, but in kind donations or equipment donations or their involvement on advisory committees, helping us with curriculum. Return on investment for student and taxpayer resources. Make sure that when we, that, that we're able to say to our students and taxpayers, when they give us money. That we're preparing students to go into the workforce, that they're prepared to go to work or that they're prepared to, to transfer on. We want to be actively engaged in our internal communities, but also external communities. So maybe providing return on investment might, we might have a, a key performance indicator or an action plan under that. That we want to increase our presence in the community through service projects or, you know, by being more visible in communities. For different things that the communities are working on, or maybe being more active through high school kinds of engagements. When we talk about enhancing employee success and excellence, we obviously want to attract and retain the best employees. There are a number of things that have changed in human resources related to programs and services to benefit all of our employees. Performance management changes, evaluation changes, training kinds of things, mandatory training. So we want to support those HR programs. Also involves, you know, continuing to address compensation needs. And making a commitment to help our employees remain in a competitive market through salary increases and equity increases and, and benefits, those kinds of things. Promoting internal and external opportunities for professional development and educational advancement. We have a really outstanding faculty development team and faculty development. We've started some more integrated and comprehensive staff development, but we really would like to roll the faculty development model. Towards a more comprehensive sweep across the staff as well. They have opportunities, obviously, to go to conferences and do webinars and do educational advancement. But again, those are important things that we can support from a, a board and administrative perspective. And as a college to help our folks continue to learn and grow. If we want them to be the best at what they can be and help our students learn and grow and be prepared, we've got to make sure our employees have those opportunities as well. And then enhance staffing and capacity levels. We know that there are specific areas, IT is one of them, where we, we are quite a ways below standard staffing and capacity. Compared to other institutions our size with student populations our size. And, and we've got some areas where we really need to address those issues. One of them, you know, that comes with the blessing of the Kansas Promise Act. Is some real concern about being able to have the staff that can track all the details of the Kansas Promise Act. And that's just a simple example, not that we would necessarily identify that as a, a specific pri, uh, performance measure. But, you know, we've got, we've got pockets of those kinds of things. We want to drive institutional sustainability and growth. And so priorities under this area would be strengthen instructional programming through continuous capital equipment, faculty excellence and technology improvements. Again, pretty broad based, but it gives us an opportunity to hone in on some very specific projects that will support our institutional programming. I know that on the, um, some of the lists that you've seen from a budget perspective. You know, we're hoping that we'll be able to commit some of the HER funds, some of the stimulus funds towards technology kinds of things. And there was some expectation even in some of those early CARES funds that came to us that had to be spent on technology. But there are again, great opportunities to support faculty excellence and training. Bring in capital equipment into our technical programs or our other programs that might come from our business partners to enhance those learning environments. Strengthen partnerships, develop new funding sources. And again, a lot of this comes through external partnerships that we have with our business and industries or other institutions. Through collaborative grant models and some things like that. Because we know, you know, that state funding is always going to be a concern. That's just one pot of money that we can access. We want to be able to keep our student tuition and fees at a reasonable level. So our, so it's affordable. And so we really need to look at some new funding, developing new funding sources as we go along. We want to increase our fund reserves to support future financing of strategic priorities and innovations. And again, we've talked with you about those, some of those priorities and being able to set aside some of the stimulus dollars. For projects that we may, we may, that may come up for us down the road. That will be, will be good to address. It can be also, this can address certainly setting in, setting aside fund reserves for deferred maintenance. You, you've seen a list that has $10 million of deferred maintenance on it, but that's not the whole list, you know? So, and then ensure institutional accountability and compliance. This certainly addresses not only the reporting requirements that we have with the Board of Regents and through the state and through the national. Reporting, you know, iPads and all of those things that we have to submit reports for. But compliance when it comes to the Higher Learning Commission and the expectation that they have that we address. What, what's expected to remain accredited and have an outstanding accreditation history. This is, this is something that, you know, probably should be on every strategic plan, no matter where we are. Because there's, there's always increased accountability and compliance that has to be addressed. When we talk about championing excellence in innovation. We want to develop increased student centered approaches to, to learning. We're talking about, you know, we walked away from some of our conversations with students before the end of the year. Asking them, what, you know, what worked well during COVID? What did you like and what should we never do again, you know? And they, they want the technology in the classrooms, they want the flexibility of, of that technology. And being able to, to potentially be in a hybrid learning environment. We want to make sure that we provide increased opportunities for them for apprenticeships and internships and, and things like that. That would be something that could fall under, under this area. Creating opportunities for them to learn that are differentiators for this college. Increasing their digital literacy. They're going out into a world that's, you know, way more technologically advanced than any of us learned in. And, you know, they're, they're ahead of the ballgame. So we've got to try to create learning opportunities for them that will position them to be really, really successful as they leave Butler and go to work or transfer on. So enhancing the digital literacy influency for students and, and staff too. It's not just students, but it's staff. And then strengthen competency based education. This is something that's becoming a larger and larger discussion across the nation of competency based education. We all do some of it, but people are, and, and part of it, I think, is being driven by the conversations of workforce needs. And that workforce pipeline not, you know, not being able to be filled. And how do we create learning opportunities for students and non-traditional students where they've worked for a number of years? And now they need to come back for training. How do we give them credit for all the years that they worked and the things that they learned on the job? Rather than having them, you know, have to sit in class and, and go through a whole two-year degree. So lots of conversations surrounding competency, competency based education. Credit for prior learning, military credit, folks come out of the military and we've got some good crosswalks for that military credit, but we need more. Board of Regents has, you know, has helped with some of that. And then again, increased apprenticeship opportunities for our students so that they can go to school, they can learn on the job, they can finish an associate's degree. Right now, we have some great partnerships with plumbers and pipe fitters and some of those folks where they will work. And as they're working on their journeyman's license over the, you know, the few years that it takes them to get through that journeyman's curriculum. We can tack on some gen ed courses on top of that and they have an associate's degree then when they finish their, you know, when they finish their journeyman's. So there's other opportunities to increase those areas of competency based education. And then we want to inspire values of equity and access. We need to maximize a diverse equitable and inclusive organization, organizational environment by encouraging engagement, input, communication. And respect towards others' ideas and experiences. We have a really robust inclusion council on campus that's cross sectional across the college that has faculty and staff. There will be some students probably that will be part of inclusion council. But they're really driving some great conversations about and, and looks at our institutional culture and climate. And talking to staff and talking to students about, you know, what, what barriers do you face here that we need to address? And we need to, you know, to think about. We want to establish and or strengthen partnerships with organizations that provide services and support underrepresented populations in the service area. Again, great opportunities to bring folks in for education, short-term training kinds of things. And, and maybe create partnerships with organizations that we haven't necessarily thought of before, that we haven't partnered with before. To, again, provide opportunities for folks to get better jobs or to get a job. Or to, you know, change a lifestyle for them that's been, that's been difficult. We want to close the achievement gap of underrepresented populations. And again, this is going to very likely be a, a performance indicator in the Board of Regents Strategic Plan moving forward, their new strategic plan. There's quite a bit of discussion about the expectation that every institution will embed some sort of performance indicator. On our Kansas Board of Regents Performance Agreements that identify how we help underrepresented populations. And how we're tracking those students and their retention and their completion rates. And what kind of wraparound services we're providing for students that are in underrepresented populations.
What does that, what does that term include?
It's broad based, it's broad, it could be non-traditional students, it could be, it could be women in career areas that are traditionally men. It could be students of color, it could be low income students, you know, it could be socioeconomic, it could be. You know, it could be transgender students. I, I think each institution is going to be able to identify that demographic of students that they want to focus on. And, and, you know, you can't just use the whole thing and say, we'll look at everybody. So we'll have to, you know, our performance indicators will have to narrow down the student populations that we really want to focus on. And we know nationally, I mean, there's, there's national research right now, if you just look at students of color. That, you know, African-American students, specifically men, don't complete at, at as high a rate as Caucasian men do. I mean, you can, so you can, you can narrow down some of those demographics to help identify what populations you want to work with. We, you know, we've, we've got in Kansas, you know, the fastest growing population is the Hispanic population. And so it might make sense for us in, in working on this priority area to identify something that would. Enhance the ability of Hispanic students to be able to come to Butler and to support their learning. And we already have some things in place, but that may be an area that we want to look at. And then we want to enhance recruiting and hiring practices to support a diverse workforce. So when we look at our employee base at the college, our faculty and staff and administrators. We certainly would like, we can't, you know, we can't make it happen overnight, but we certainly would like the. Colleges workforce to reflect if we, as much as we could, our student, you know, what our students look like. The demographics in Kansas are still, you know, pretty predominantly Caucasian, but that's changing and it's, you know, over time and it'll continue to change. And so we want to be aware of that. What are we doing when we recruit and when we hire people or when we, you know, are advertising? Are we doing things specifically that limit opportunities for folks of color or diverse, diverse populations? To apply and be potentially employed here? So, you know, it's, it's something that we really want to look at and dig into. We also spent a little bit of time talking about, you know, why do we do what we do? Why do, what's our Butler because? We're, you know, we're talking about that, we, we presented that information to you, you know, last week about our Butler because. And what do we champion, what do we practice, what do we build, what do we serve, what are we dedicated to? And, you know, these, this is sort of the list. We, we work for our employees and the communities, we are passionate about student success. We want to create opportunities for our students. We, we have potential dream, we're potential dream makers and life changers that, that are here. We want to be catalysts for success, we want to have a workforce impact, we want to be collaborative. We want to really focus in and make sure that this is a culture where folks have a voice and they feel included. And they feel that their opinions matter. We want to obviously support intellectual development and we want to support innovation. So, you know, this just gives you a little bit of an overview of our conversations. And so I, let's go back to those goals just a little bit and see, you know, I've been talking the whole time. What thoughts do you have on those overarching goals or some of the priorities that you might have? And again, we are going to put together the action plan tonight by any means, but any thoughts that you have regarding, let's just kind of go down the line. Any thoughts that you have regarding supporting students and their success? We'll just kind of take them one at a time, if that's okay. Okay. College relations and marketing are the ones that put together all of that information. And it's probably, and it's money out of their budget. My guess would be this time of year, and Kelly can chime in here, but my guess would be that that TV commercial was based specifically on the time of year that we're in right now. I haven't seen the commercials, so I'm not quite sure what it addressed, but it, it. Okay. Those. Emergency.
We have multiple, so I don't sure if you're referring to the one that's running on TV or if, where you. If you, if you've seen it. Yeah, yeah. And what we try to also look at is capacity. We're trying to find those programs based on their funnels and how we can feed them into the funnel so that they can enroll. So we'll also look at capacity. We've got programs that are great and those great programs have a natural draw to them and people are aware of that. And those funnels are just typically stronger. We're trying to find those that need the help of the marketing dollars. So that's why we'll trade those in and out once in a while, just trying to pivot and point in different directions.
Well, and that's one of the things, if you, you know, if you. And you asked for my opinion, so guess what, I gave it to you. I, that's fine, I, I'm glad to have it. One of the things that we, you know, have on here again is to make sure that we address innovation. And that we, I think I said, we want some things that are differentiators for us. We want, we want you to support innovative ideas that we have that will create differentiation for Butler. And help us stand out in ways that no other colleges is doing. So we'll be bringing some things forward, believe me, we've got some ideas.
What kind of performance goals or measures would be in place for, say, each of these or the first goal? I mean, in terms of kind of trying to.
That's what we'll have to flesh out, that's what we'll flesh out and bring back to you, but. That's, that's what we're putting. By organization, what do you mean? That's on here. Some of them will be that way, some of them will be more focused than that. I mean, when you, when you talk about, when you're talking about, uh, let me see if I can come up with an example. I mean, you know, if you're talking about enrollment goals and things like that, every department will be aware of what those enrollment goals would be. And, and would have to help contribute to those. But we are going to take this strategic plan and then have student services and academics and everybody else develop additional strategic plans on top of this. Tom's going to spend some time on the academic end, putting together specific academic strategic plan that will fold into this. But these are, this is overarching college goals with key performance indicators that, that we know. I mean, some of these will be specific areas that we'll have to be working on them. Not every, not everybody college wide will be working on every single goal. That's not how this kind of a plan is put together. Other things under students and success?
There's just going to be a lot of the indicators.
There's just going to be a lot of the indicators that are in the back of every board book, K-Bor.
Eventually, yeah, we'll report on them. Well, K-Bor, you know, the KPIs that we put in the board book that had, those will be the ones that, that, those will focus on our specifically, but there will be some of these that will be embedded in the Board of Regents' performance agreement. The thing, the thing with the Board of Regents right now is that we're in a bridge year. So our performance agreement with the, with the Board of Regents hasn't changed, it's stayed the same because they're in the process of updating their strategic plan. So once we know that, once they get their strategic plan finalized and we know what some of their expectations are for each of the institutions, then we'll have to build some of those into, into ours. But we don't know what that is yet. Their K-Bor's doing their planning retreat right now, so...
What's kind of the normal timeline for that information to where...
From the Board of Regents.
Yeah.
They're doing their, Board of Regents' planning retreat is this week. And I think they're talking about their strategic plan, but my guess is that they won't have it finalized. We would probably have to, we'll have to build that into our next year's strategic plan. I don't know that they will have it finalized soon enough that we'll be able to fit anything into our strategic plan, but a lot of it depends on what they get done during their, their planning retreat this week. So I'm not sure what else on their agenda. It's not, it's not an open, it's just the Regents and university presidents and we've got a couple of community and technical college representatives that are there, but we, as institutions, aren't involved in the, in that planning retreat necessarily. So can't answer that completely for you.
Are we ever invited?
Community colleges? Not as a whole, no. They invite the KACC executive director and then our Alicia Johnston, Dr. Johnston from Fort Scott is the community college president's president this year, and so she is there with Heather this year. And then on the technical side, they would have the executive director of the Technical Association and then I think Jim Binat from Manhattan Area Technical Colleges, their technical college presidents this year. So, yeah, they, and, and we, we're, basically we're there to listen. We don't get to engage very deeply in those conversations, so... Under advancing communities and partnerships, any thoughts there for us?
That one really excites me.
There's some great opportunity there.
Yes.
Really is. We have, we have some great opportunities to, and, you know, if you remember your goals from the, from the board planning retreat, high school, business and industry, you had about four things and, and they were real general sorts of things. I should have written them down and I, and I didn't, unfortunately, I thought I did. But they all fit within, they all fit within our bigger overarching, you know, the four things that you talked about are going to be embedded in here somehow. And we're going to flesh them out in a more detailed and more concrete way. So when we bring those priorities or when we bring the performance indicators back to you, I'll, we'll point those out for you.
I still have people calling me from Blue Stem Leon asking about trap shooting, fishing.
Yeah. Yeah. We've got, and again, we've got, you know, those are opportunities to engage and attract high school students. There are things that are, can be lower cost types of activities to initiate for students and give some, I mean, there's a lot of high schools now that have shooting sports teams. And we have some opportunities around here with, again, local partners to help support programs like that, so... How about enhancing employee success and excellence? Thoughts there?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, when we recognize the students at our monthly meetings, I'd love us to recognize our employees. Maybe they...
We do sometimes.
You know, maybe they, I don't know.
Those, those recognitions come to us from different, you know, department chairs or deans or directors or whatever, and, and we do recognize employees. There will be employees sometimes.
Even being on the outside, like maybe they did a United Way, something or other, but I think to keep our employees engaged, we need to really recognize them.
Okay. Appreciate that. Shelley?
I can't remember that.
Other thoughts?
Lance, what were you going to say?
I forgot, no?
You're getting old.
Should have went first. It may come back to me if I remember. Should have wrote it down. What types of things are being done there now? I feel like we do a fair amount to, from an employee standpoint as far as support, recognition and stuff that are there.
Well, service awards, recognition, you know, service awards, you know, if there's, I don't know, you know, if, if they've, you know, published a journal article or, you know, those are, those sometimes are the recognitions that come to me that are on the board agenda. Surprisingly, I mean, you know, some of, some of the employees do not want public recognition. They really don't. We, we've talked to them about, you know, doing some of those kinds of things during institutional development days and they're, they're okay with their name being on the screen as a five-year, you know, service award, ten-year, but they don't want to have to get up in front of people and accept awards.
They want to be paraded in front of the whole room.
Yeah. Those are any, do you ever just get money instead of award certificates? No.
Oh, we do in some of our benefits. So we got what's called educational advancement and it's a benefit that we have. So if they are taking college courses.
So once they achieve a certain number of credit hours, they get...
So only if they're continuing ed or something like that?
Yeah, or, and some of it is, yeah, it can be continuing education or it can be things that apply to their job. Or we have some that if they've written, you know, and published something, that they could also get credit for that as well. So as far as that type of award, it's more for achievement of what their professional advancement is or educational advancement.
How about thoughts on driving institutional sustainability and growth?
That's what I'd really like to see.
Is this where credit hour growth and some of that stuff would...
I would really like to see what we're going to do to turn around our decline. My, a little bit of my concern is like I stated earlier, I think we're keeping the same amount of scholarships, athletic scholarships, you know, people that were students at Butler that scholarship. So we, I think we're keeping about the same number of people that don't really pay into credit hours while declining the people that we make money from for credit hours. I think we need to somehow turn that around a bit, not a bit, but a lot.
Other thoughts?
You could take some classes.
I'm thinking about it this fall.
I am too.
Russian or Japanese.
I'm thinking about tap dancing.
I'd love to see that.
Really? I would like to see that too. Oh, okay.
Taking one?
Trustee start taking...
When we, when we talk about championing, championing excellence in innovation, again, I think this gives us a great opportunity to support competency-based education, really start to enhance and increase those opportunities.
This is where new programs and stuff would fall kind of as well as that...
It could, yeah, it could, certainly. It wouldn't have to, but there are, again, you know, we're constantly looking at what, you know, the workforce needs are and, you know, are there, are there area needs and doesn't have to be a two-year program. It can be short-term certificates, it can be short-term training kinds of things, but, you know, continually, continually trying to scan that.
Which also plays into sustainability and growth.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Item that came up during the work session about, and I know part of it is waiting on the data that's coming in at the end of the year on the audit, but with the, the idea of evaluating profitability is not the right term, but the, the financial effectiveness of the different programs in terms of costs around the program, number of students, enrollment, where is that going to fit in to? Is that part of sustainability or is that...
Yeah, it can, I mean, it can fit in under some of these different areas. It can be under ensuring institutional accountability and compliance, under driving institutional sustainability and growth. I mean, we can fit those kinds of things in.
Didn't we buy it software?
Not yet. I don't think we have, but it's on the list. From B K D.
Have we approved them to go forward with that?
We're waiting for you to approve the budget. I think it's one of the budget items that's...
I saw that in here.
Yeah.
Also, and I'm sure we're trying to check against that, maybe also looking to see if there are any other...
Right.
Programs that are similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, what are other colleges using?
Under inspiring values of equity and access, any thoughts there?
I think just from an access standpoint, I mean, there has to be continued focus on affordability. I think sometimes we get compared to WSU and that, that's, I don't think a fair comparison when you think about what a lot of community college does for a lot of students that can't afford or won't go to larger four-year school.
Yeah. Yeah, we, you, you have to constantly be aware of what, what they're able to manage financially. Not every student's going to qualify for a Pell Grant. You know, we know that the majority of our students that come to us are working and trying to go to school at the same time and, and sometimes working two or three jobs to make ends meet. And that's, that's part of the community college mission. I mean, that's what we believe in. We're open door, we create access, we need to be affordable because we have the ability to offer those opportunities to students and change their lives when they, you know, they wouldn't be able to afford to go to a four-year institution. It's not that we're getting students coming to us that are less capable and that aren't as smart. The majority of students come to community colleges because they, they don't have the financial means to go to a four-year institution right off the bat and they need an affordable option and small class sizes and those kinds of things to, to help them. That's, I think it's a pretty powerful, I think, I think we have a pretty powerful opportunity to help them be successful. Other thoughts?
The access really worries me sometimes. I know we did a really great job of the, you know, doing a lot of stuff online and I, I'd really like to see that continue as an option for students if they have to stay home. I mean, look, as a student that had to go to school and raise a grandchild and then finish my master's, come on, man. I had to drag that kid to school a lot because there wasn't anybody to take care of him. So all I'm saying is, it would have been nice if I could have just said, hey, I can't come in, I got to stay home, he's got to go to bed at eight o'clock, whatever, I can Zoom.
Yeah. Zoom wasn't available for you.
Exactly.
You know? It is now, but...
But it is now. It would be nice if we could have that as a policy.
We already, yeah. Well, we already have some plans in place. We're going to create some high flex classrooms that have those options for students because that was one of the things, that was one of the things that students told us in our conversation.
And really put Butler way above.
We've got some things again on that list that will help us create some high flex classrooms for students. I, one of the, one of the young ladies in my, one of the forums I did before the end of the semester was working three jobs and trying to go to school. And she said, I, I need, and we were talking about what, what do we need to keep? You know, what should we not walk away from at all? And she said, I, I need the flexibility, I need the technology in the classroom so that I can blend my work schedules with my school schedule and still be able to complete my degree.
How soon do you think we can muster up something as far as a change in policy this fall?
Well, we don't have to have a change in policy. Academics has gone through a really significant amount of work this summer to define what those, you know, everybody knows what online is, but to define those different levels of modality for the classrooms, it doesn't have to be a college policy. The students will have the ability to enroll in the course modality that fits them best and it will be identified on the schedule for them, so they'll know.
Well, they have the flexibility if they didn't enroll into the Zoom classes to suddenly have to go Zoom because of an illness or because they suddenly don't have babysitters or things like that. I mean, to be able to switch back and forth is the flexibility I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you got to know it in the front whether or not you'll be able to continue all semester.
It, we've learned a whole lot of things and I don't mean to speak for Lori and, and Dr. Neville, but I would say that our faculty do a really, really good job of supporting students when they run into those kinds of situations and need some support and some assistance. I think that going forward, even if they don't enroll in one of those classes, that we would be able to create probably some flexibility for them by maybe putting them in a different section that would have that flexibility that they need. I don't think you're going to find too many faculty around here that will say to a student, well, you're out of luck, you know? You, you can't come to class, you're out of luck. We're going to figure out a way to try and help them, so.
Are some of those...
I would say, right Lori? I mean, that's sort of been what we've, and Tom too.
I think there's a little bit of a fine line in that too between, you know, just a college kid deciding, hey, I don't want to go today, I don't feel like going, and trying to manage that a little bit with...
I think the instructors are going to have to know the child.
And I know, I think this was true at least with my college experience and I assume most good colleges, that if you communicate with your instructor that you're having an issue, they're going to try to work with you if you just don't communicate it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, a lot of it falls back on the student, I think, to some degree.
And are these classes mostly just live or are they archived also? Like if, if the classes were recorded, the student could fit them in every night whenever they got off the board.
Some faculty are recording their lectures and they're utilizing the high flex option. That is an option that they can record and then make that available in campus. I think we're still trying to figure out what the new norm is. So one of the things we did this summer was redefine all of our classroom modalities and so, so we're going to get them out in time, providing that students know what they're enrolling in as a high flex section, exactly what you're talking about.
Good. What a selling point, what a selling point that would be.
We also added a online live option where there, it is an online class, but it has a Zoom component where the student can be able to Zoom with the instructor so they have more of a live interaction rather than just completely in campus. So we have to define those modalities, we have to put some guidelines in place for faculty so that there's some standardization. I don't, I don't want faculty all doing their own thing, it creates a lot of confusion for students, it's hard for advising, to advise a student of what, what is expected of the student in a particular classroom. And so we want to have those guidelines in place and have things defined so that students know exactly what they're enrolling in, advising them, how to advise that student based on their life situation, put the students best value for their life. So those are the things that we have to work through. We are piloting high flex this fall with faculty that are interested in doing that. And I think that as we build the spring semester, Dr. Neville will pick the reins and he will see that become more planned out. We build our schedule so far advanced that when we do make changes, it is hard to switch gears. We started enrolling students for the fall semester back in March and so some of those modalities hadn't been defined yet, so it's kind of hard just to throw them in the schedule of the last semester. So we have to plan it out and do it right and do it in a way.
The, the last page, oh, sorry.
And it's also, you know, it's a new pedagogical approach for faculty too, so they'll have to get used to experimenting and trying new things in that learning environment as well. But also if you think about it as, as that grows and if that's, if that's something we want to look at, you know, we also have to provide the infrastructure for that, which is cameras and technology and all, all the stuff that Bill's area provides. So, you know, there is an investment in that as well, but like you mentioned, it would be a differentiator for us. We have to grow into that a little bit as, as...
Oh no. We've had a night or two. That's plenty of time.
I could see something in the future along the lines of MasterClass online, if we had our master teacher teach his course, a student could take it anywhere in the world and, and do that. I mean, that's, that's an option. If there's a set course that's pretty much taught regularly by super great teachers, I mean, that would be something we could maybe look into. And then you could enroll students, they could get a degree, they get money, there's no expense to us except for if there's any, you know, data, cloud, you know, holding all the storage, but right now I don't think that's an issue.
My point is, I really would like to improve the numbers as far as students. I'd really like that. I would like to jump really fast. And I don't see that happening until we become more innovative in accruing more student population. And I don't see doing that until we can learn to, uh, you know, they used to call it, uh, lead time. Ideas, lead time. And, uh, I, I think we need to shorten the lead time. Whatever we do, I think we need to improve the time that it takes to create infrastructure to do it with.
Okay.
So that we can stay ahead.
I, I will take that. I will take that as positive direction so that when we bring innovations forward, there'll be great support from the board.
But not Bill asking for a bunch of money for the innovations.
Well.
Yeah.
No, you're exact, you're thinking exactly the same things that we're all thinking. We have to be growth minded. We've got to be, we've got to be innovative. Uh, we, we just have to do those things, so.
You have, my, my point is that you have these colleges that are locally and that are, they are growing. And we don't want them to grow faster than we can recover. And I do believe that we can recover. I do have absolute no doubt that we can become very strong as far as growth, but not if we move like a turtle. Not unless we become more innovative as far as our approach.
I appreciate hearing that. That's, that's a good thing to, uh, to hear. Take that to heart.
The administrators all heard that, right?
Good. Okay, we're in. The, just, and then I just provided, um, on the, one of the next slides, um, unless you've got other thoughts on some of these goals and priorities. Little bit of a timeline. Um, I think I told you also that the plan this fall, starting in September, is to really dig deep into reviewing mission and vision and values, really, really go back and engage students and staff and community members and advisory committee members and really do a deep dive into, um, you know, wh- wh- what do we, what are we doing from a mission perspective or a vision perspective or values? What, what needs to change there? How have we changed over time, uh, and if, and do those things need to be revised? And so then, again, a deep dive into developing goals and strategies for the next multi-year strategic plan. And we will know for sure by then, you know, as we start those, we'll have a little bit more information from the board regions and, and, uh, you know, expectations that they might have that we're not quite aware of right now, so. And then, you know, a picture of our great students. I mean, that's the last, yours is black and white, but, uh, you know, that's why we come to work every day and why we do what we do.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep, so. Pat, and just as a side note, Randy Bush, who's been our international, uh, our lead international advisor retired, and his retirement reception was on Friday, and there were students, international students that came back for that retirement reception. And, uh, uh, had amazing things to say about the impact that he had had. You know, you think about the challenges that those students have. Oftentimes there's a language barrier. There, you know, are, um, visa issues that they have to deal with, all kinds of things like that. And, um, it was really, really fun to listen to those students, uh, and some of the conversation that day. And that's just a single individual that's impacted specifically international students, but life-changing, created life-changing opportunities for them.
Do we ask quite a few of your students?
Um, we have less than, less than probably seven percent of our population, seven or eight percent of our population. I don't know what it is now. We've lost international students, uh, over the last couple of years. COVID especially impacted. And then, um, some of the, huh? Yeah, so that's what I was gonna say. Some of the changes at the national level, national administration that limited uh, or made it more difficult for students to get visas and to come to the United States. But, yeah, there's some opportunity. A lot of the students that, the international students that we have are here because they have family members that live in the Wichita area. And we're, again, an affordable option for them compared to Wichita State. Or, um, they may be coming to take classes from us. Maybe they're taking classes at multiple institutions. But they're, some of the classes they're taking from us are because they're smaller and they have a little bit more personal attention and, you know, a little bit more one-on-one. We get a lot of students that come to us for
Physics, chemistry and physics. Yeah.
Is there a lot of that that's just for a tuition cost standpoint? If those tuition rates were just more in line with, say, out of state or out of county as opposed to the, is, is cost a big prohibitor for them?
It can be.
Just because of the total population being low in terms of percentage of students. Is there a bit of, have we ever looked at what that would do if we
We did actually.
Our tuition cost to out of state or something?
I have to go back and look at, I have to go back and look at the, the annual changes in tuition. But there was a point in time, it's been a few years ago, but we actually went back and, and actually dropped, started to drop our international student tuition. It was getting beyond the point where it was affordable for them. And so we held it flat or we dropped it a little bit and we saw an increase in, in international student enrollment. The, the past couple of years have just been really difficult with COVID and with the, some of the national policies and stuff. But, um, that's a, that's a sector, a demographic of students that we, you know, can continue to recruit and hard to get here. They're good students.
I mentioned
And they create a great, they create a great, I don't know.
Climate, I think so.
Yeah.
When you talk about diversity, just perspectives from around the world, it's
Yeah.
Pretty incredible what somebody that's
How many of those, um, international students are athletes?
We probably have, we may have a few students on the track team that are international. We've had, over the last couple of years, we maybe have had a soccer player or two. We don't, we don't have, some institutions have a lot of international students that are athletes, but we typically don't. We continue to recruit Kansas kids as much as we can. So we, we have a few, but I can't tell you for sure
Yeah.
How many, um, I don't know, Jessica, if you know, but I, I mean, yeah.
We've got two for soccer. I think we've got one running volleyball.
Yeah, definitely.
Kind of one to get in, uh, maybe three or four track kids.
Yeah, yeah, so not a lot of them.
One basketball, one in basketball.
Five percent is our international. Okay, thank you. Thanks for watching.
I did mention that when we approved the two-dollar out of county. I mean, we could drop interna-, because it's such a small pool, we could drop international quite a bit and see what happens. It's not gonna cost us anything to find out. It's, it's not that, there's not that many, there's not that many kids. I mean, if we dropped it quite a bit, it's
Economic impact is minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Significantly, I think it was back in two thousand and, and year early sixteen.
It was, it's been five or, five or so years ago.
And we did see an increase in our international enrollment.
Is it substantial enough to offset the?
Yeah, it's worth
Kind of prep back up, you know?
What do we say?
I haven't looked to see what theirs is for this coming year. Um, they, they typically try to undercut us just a little bit. The thing, the thing that's hard to, that's hard to sort out sometimes is, uh, the tuition and fees that you put out on a public-facing website, um, oftentimes doesn't include all of the course fees. The, you know, the programmatic fees, a lot of them, a lot of them charge, uh, I, I know WSU chat charges a differential tuition for the programs. And so I think when, uh, and some of the other institutions do too. And so I think when they submit their information to the board regions, they figure an average cost. Because if each program is different, it's hard to delineate all of that. So sometimes it's hard to know what, uh, you know, what the true cost is. But typically they try to stay a little bit lower than we are. And that's, and that's why it's a, you know, that's, those are critical discussions for us when we talk about tuition and fees.
That might be something to look at, Shelley.
Yeah.
It's a very small
We could figure out, we could figure out that Mendoza line. How many students do we have to have? You know, how, how much does our enrollment have to increase to offset that decrease? And it, it's easy to figure, yeah. Anything else? Appreciate your comments and
My, my only two cents is, I, on the driving
She had a cent yet.
Always had a two cent. Uh, closing achievement gap of underrepresented populations. Right now as a culture, we do so much focusing on what color are you, what height are you, what, what's different about you? And we have, we're just constantly looking at each other's differences instead of how we're alike. Come to Butler, get an amazing education. We don't care who you are, where you come from. Come here, work hard. We're gonna give us your best. We'll give you our best. Period. The smart note the king. We don't care what your color is, what your background is. Come here and let's all work together.
That sounds like a good commercial.
I just get so tired of like, well, you're different, you're different, and this how you're different, and this how I'm different. It's like, no, we're all Americans. We're all here. Not all of us are Americans here. It's almost from, from out of
I never perceived it like that, but that's, that's a good point.
Just come here and work together. And I, pointing out our differences all the time is exhausting.
Well, and, yeah, this is intended to
No, I, I understand. It's just, we're constantly pointing it out. I call it diversity police. We just have to be hit over the head all the time with it.
I think it's, I, I think it's, um, there's a need to continue to have those discussions and have that focus to break down those barriers that you were talking about. To help people understand that, you know, we, we are open door, we are open access. We want you to come to us and we want you to be part of our college and we want, it doesn't matter, you know, it doesn't matter who you are. That's why we're here. That's why we serve students. I don't care where they come from or, you know, what they look like. We should have an open door and open access for students, so. And I would like it if no one had any preferences. I think that's how we would have to look at it. If we truly observed exactly what Kim just said.
Yeah, you have your little, Lance was asking about the little
You're sending us to California for, for vacations?
Well.
Is that in the trustee budget? I'm just kidding.
We have a little bit of money in the trustee budget, not, not a lot for travel, but
Ever been to conferences? You know, they're not vacation.
Yeah, if you really go to them, to, to have a B conferences, I mean, you know. My, my expectation is if, you know, there are more conferences, then we'll all be
Sounds like we finished up just in time for the rain, but I hope everybody brought a umbrella. Thank you all for being here tonight and taking the time.
Okay, take care.
Thanks all. Hey, Ken?
I have one question for you.